Y'all good?
Yeah.
I don't have P S packet.
Good morning, I am calling to order the December 10th Audit Committee meeting. If we could start with an invocation, please, if you'll bow your heads. Lord, thank you for the rain and all that it means to us and our beautiful community. Thank you for the people here in this room with us, helping us make decisions and participate in county business, be with the leaded officials here as we make decisions that affect our community and our county, and help us to make our decisions in wisdom and in truth. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And I gave you a reprieve from pledging to the Georgia flag this morning. I know the chairman is excited because he hasn't memorized it yet. Let's see, Audit Committee, we have a quorum here with five members present. May I have an approval from the minutes of the previous minute meeting that has been presented to you?
Moved except.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
It's ready for your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. We'll move forward as presented. The debate agenda is the Fiscal Year 23-24 Audit Results Summary. We have, good morning, how are you today? Get to see you once a year and hearing this.
Once a year, yes, once a year.
Tell us what you've been.
Excuse me, and I'm battling bronchitis, bear with me, thank you. All right, so I am Bonnie Cox, I do serve as your relationship partner for the financial statement audit, well, for everything that we do for the county, but today, we're going to talk about the results of the financial statement audit, and this is your agenda. It does look lengthy, many of these are required communications to you, that's the Audit Committee, in receiving the audit results. This is just a snapshot of the team that served you on the financial statement audit. Lauren Strope is the engagement partner that served and signed the, or is ready to sign after approval today, the audit report. Duwanna was the manager on the engagement, and then Jennifer and Yumi, Yumi is here in Augusta. What I will point out to you about this team that serves the county is the group of this service team, they work on nothing but public sector, local governments, 12 months a year. So they are very specialized in the work that they do in serving governments just like Columbia County all year long. One point to make about this particular slide is that we're ready to go with a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the county for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. So, reminder there. This is a reminder that the internal controls that we look at during the course of the audit, we do not test internal controls to opine on the internal controls, but we do consider internal controls. So when we do that, we bring to attention if we find any things that are called material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, we're required to report those to you. And so this list here is just a definition of kind of what I just recapped to you. More definitions here, I will say that if you sit on either this Audit Committee or any other Audit Committee in any other world that you serve, this is a very important thing to pay attention to. But what I can tell you is I have no material weaknesses to report to you in internal controls as a result of the audit. You do receive federal funds, and there are extra auditing procedures that go along with receiving those federal funds. See here listed here, this is the particular grant that was selected this year for testing. There's a risk assessment process that guides us on how to select what federal major program is tested. We did this, we complied, there are 14 compliance requirements that go along with any federal grant. We tested all those with no findings. If we had had any audit adjustments, either posted or proposed, would see those here, what you see here, or we had no proposed audit adjustments as a result of our audit These next few slides are also part of our required communications. This year, there were no new accounting policies adopted, that's unusual these days. So all the accounting standards that are described in Note 2 of your financial statements are the same accounting policies that were there from last year. Related party transactions are just required to bring to your attention. This is where you have any disclosures in regards to related parties that may be connected to the county in any way, shape, or form. If we had had any difficulties identifying those, auditing those, or anything like that, I would bring that to your attention, but we did not have any issues at all with those. We did not have any significant and unusual transactions to bring to your attention. Got it? Estimates. Estimates are required to bring to your attention just because we have to audit those in a completely different way. They require judgment, they require not like deposits coming into the bank and checks going out of the bank account. They require a lot of other inputs going into those estimates. What you see here is a list of what we have deemed to be those significant estimates there, your allowances for uncollectibles in various different places that you have receivables, both taxes and water and sewer utilities there, you see. How long your fixed assets are going to last, how long the buildings are going to survive, the vehicles, the equipment there, that's that depreciation. The fair value of your investments are also deemed to be an estimate for your portfolio of fair value. OPEB, that is Other Post-Employment Benefits, that is an actuary report for any health insurance that is paid for your retirees there, it's based on actuarial assumptions, as is the pension. Compensated Absences, that is for PTO, like accrual or vacation, sick time that accrues, and an estimate of how much is going to be used for people who already worked here. The landfill obligation, also an estimate there. Your claims payable on self-insurance for claims that have been incurred but not yet been paid out, also an estimate. And then you have imputed interest rates on your leases and those information technology subscriptions there. So, all of these include judgment, external experts to kind of come in, and we were able to test all of the inputs and assumptions here and had no issues with the results of the testing. We believe your financial statements to be clear and concise. One other thing that is a root of the external auditor role is to maintain independence. And so we do perform certain what we call non-attest services that are not audit services, but we do safeguard that independence in serving the county in that regard. Your management takes all responsibility for the work that we do, but we do certain non-audit work, the data collection form, that's in regards to your federal funding that you receive. In preparation, certain component units in the agency funds and constitutional offices, we do compile some of that information. Looking at other things in regards to grant life cycles there, we looked at some of that work. But for all of the work that we've done there, we have safeguarded that independence, and we wouldn't issue that opinion if we didn't believe that we did that. If we had had any difficulties during the course of the audit, if we had had disagreements with your management, if we had had to go to an outside auditor consultant for any particular scratchy issues, we would bring that to your attention. We did not have any of those things. And your management is also signing for us what's called a representation letter that indicates that they were truthful in their inquiry, in our inquiries, and did not withhold information that would have been relevant to either the financial statements or our audit procedures. To our knowledge, we know that your management does engage with an internal audit firm, that's a non-independent function there, but to our knowledge, your management is not consulting with other independent accountants or. If we'd had any fraud or illegal acts, or issues about going concern, meaning is the county going to be here this time next year, we would bring that to your attention as well. Not going to read all these words on this particular slide for you. All that stuff that I was talking about in those estimates, the, there's, for the pension, there's a lot of schedules in there, there's a lot of schedules that go into the actual full-blown report, the statistical section and all that. What this language here says is on those informations, we read all of that, it's consistent with the overall financial statements. We don't opine at that level of detail, we opine at the financial statement level, but these are the procedures that we did apply to that additional supplementary information. It's not going to be slow-going for new announcements coming forward. You can see here, these are a list of upcoming GAZBs, which are governmental accounting standards that your management has to implement there coming up in the coming year, and we can continue to talk about how we can help if needed. Management is really good about standards. So I will stop talking, and I appreciate the grace with the bronchitis, but if you have any questions that I can help with as a part of the audit.
Very good job. That's, for them to find nothing to report on, that's pretty impressive.
Yes.
Lot of work, we appreciate it.
I will just remind you that you do have my contact information. I appreciate the time on your agenda, but I also am available to you whenever you have, I'll report to you guys, you guys are the clients, so if you have any questions or follow-up, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Darren, you have two accountants sitting up here evaluating this.
I'm deferring to my peers.
And gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, do you have any questions? What we've just presented, we will accept that as information, and moving on to our next set of audits, Mr. Schneider, what do you have for us today? A lot of accountants in the room going to be judging.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A lot of accountants in the room this morning. Okay, I have three reports to go over with you, and then I'll update you on where we are with upcoming reports. We'll start with the Performing Arts Center. This is a follow-up report, we presented our Performing Arts Center report one year ago. There were a few findings, and the board asked that we come back a year later and take another look at it, so this is the result of that follow-up. Starting with the deposit testing, you'll see on page 5, our recommendation and management response in regards to essentially record retention. When we discussed this with management, they indicated that there's a physical folder containing relevant documents for each event. When I say physical folder, I mean hard copies. We selected 19 to look at, and we didn't find the settlement statement in 16 out of 19. However, at the end of the day, we were able to see almost everything we wanted to see. There was one missing certificate of liability, insurance not be located. And so our recommendation is a consistent method of record retention, and I believe if you look at management's response, I think they're leaning towards more of electronic record-keeping rather than these folders where papers can easily be misplaced. Also in that same section, we looked at concession revenues and deposits associated with that, no issues there whatsoever. Box office sales, we also had no exceptions. We did count some inventory. When we talk about inventory at the PAC, we're talking about beverages, maybe snacks, large quantity, small dollar amount, and also distributed throughout the Performing Arts Center. I know all of us have been there, and there are several concession stands and bars throughout the Performing Arts Center. We selected 20 items to count. What you do is you select 20 items that are on what we call the floor and trace those back to the listing, and you select 10 from the listing and trace them to the floor, and 18 out of 20 of those items were not exactly as they were on the listing. 17, in 17 instances, we counted a higher number of items, and in one instance, we counted a lower number of items. And so we made a recommendation on page 6 that the PAC consider a methodology to strengthen their internal controls over inventory. I recognize, as I just mentioned, a high quantity of low dollar amount items distributed throughout the Performing Arts Center, it'd be very difficult to do what we call perpetual inventory on that, but I believe that's an opportunity to improve internal controls in regards to those items. And management response is on page 6, along with our recommendation. Purchase requisitions, purchase cards, timesheets, and other general inquiries and observations were all completed, all tested without exception. And so that is the report on the Performing Arts Center. Are there any questions about?
I had a couple on the inventory, so what is the estimated total inventory dollar amount at any given time?
Oh gosh, I could get that to you?
Okay.
I don't have it with me.
Okay. Does our current point-of-sale system have the capability of tracking inventory? Because I read that we're using spreadsheets right now and was just curious of that.
I believe that's, I do not believe that there's a level of sophistication necessary for a transaction at the Clover thing to immediately update any sort of perpetual inventory at this time. And that could be expensive to implement, not, it would be ideal for certain that every transaction would immediately update the inventory, but it seems to be a manual process at this point, and there's no indication that anything's missing, but I think there's an opportunity there to improve those internal controls. And not being an expert in that precise area, I'd tailor the recommendation to say, management should figure out what's best for this situation.
Could I make a comment on that?
Sure.
We do have an inventory program within Munis that we use, like for the warehouse and all, I don't know if that would work with a PAC or not, but we could certainly.
I think the problem would be, you're talking about foodstuffs, right?
We're talking about packs of M&Ms, it's one picture.
Some of this, there's going to be a delta of some sort that I think we're going to have to, if it gets too large and we got a problem, but what you would need to happen is that, you're talking, or, I'm sorry, it was Allison, you were mentioning that it would automatically update at the point of sale.
Right.
But that would be a different type program than what Munis would do.
Those are very expensive.
It could be expensive. I believe there's a cost-benefit analysis to be done on that. I'm thinking more of the alcohol rather than the snacks. I think there are some incentive to have good quality controls over the inventory alcohol.
What shrinkage in terms of dollars?
Well, actually.
We said it was more.
There was more onsite than on the inventory listing, so.
That's like a good problem.
It's growing. But we can look, it's certainly something we can look at. I think, like you said, there will be some degree of shrinkage for a variety of reasons. Wrappers that aren't complete. Now, if that wouldn't get captured at a point-of-sale typically, but it would have to be managed. So, what does that, what does that number look like that's acceptable and right? Want to minimize it as much as possible, but it's something we can talk about.
I feel like you're asking the right questions, and I tried to make my recommendation open-ended that, I don't know the exact answer, but it's something to.
Sure.
Any other questions about?
Comments on that section? No, let's move to the next section, please.
Right. Next, we have the probate court. All right, probate court. So the probate court, just talking about using different accounting systems, the probate court actually uses QuickBooks to reconcile their bank statements and track their transactions. And so we tested the bank reconciliations because it's such an important part of what they do. As an agency fund, none of the assets they hold actually belong to the probate court, but they're all eventually going back to someone else. So, we tested 12 bank reconciliations, that's four counts over three separate months. And what we found is that for 11 out of 12, the registered balance, which is what QuickBooks calls the reconciled balance, did not agree to the trial balance, the internal records. And the differences were from $200 to $1 million. We dug in a little deeper, we went beyond the 12 that we originally selected, and, which leads us to our next point here. On these reconciliations that didn't tie, we noted several aged outstanding checks and deposits and transit, some that went back to 2011. And as we went back through the months, there was, these old items had previously cleared, and at that point, the bank reconciliation's tied to the trial balance, and so something technical happened in QuickBooks, which uncleared transactions going back to 2011 and caused all of these inconsistencies. So, these three bullet points all go together. The bank reconciliations have not been properly performed, there are these old outstanding checks and deposits and transit, which should have been cleared, had been cleared. We didn't see that the bank reconciliations were being viewed, timely documenting that review, finding these problems and resolving them. So, these three bullet points all kind of work together. Our recommendation and management response is on page 4 of the report. We can pause there for a minute and see if anybody has any questions about that.
Who's preparing the bank reconciliation, or should be preparing the bank reconciliation?
There's an office manager or administrative person in, within the court, does the reconciliation, and ultimately, the judge should review or designate someone to review those bank reconciliations. I describe it as a technical issue because I think any accounting firm could step in and help to straighten these bank reconciliations out and figure out what's going on with the old items. But as, from an internal control perspective, when things like this show up, they should be investigated. Consistent review of the reconciliations would identify these problems.
Appropriate to ask somebody from internal services to look at it, or do we need to get in outside?
We do not get involved in their processes.
That's fair.
And I don't want to say too much.
At the end of the day, we're responsible for the monies in the county, and they are part of our audit. We make recommendations, but constitutional officers in Georgia have the ability to run their office the way they see fit. They have a certain amount of control over their dollars until their dollars are remitted to the county. As long as the dollars are remitted to the county properly and in the right amounts and those sort of things, how they get there, we really have not a lot of oversight. We can make recommendations, but that's the extent of our.
And as Ms. Cox mentioned in her presentation, we actually hire them as part of the audit at the end of the year to compile the data that we need for the audit.
Which is just once, once per year?
Yes.
Would it be, in your opinion, better to have that on a more regular schedule, like quarterly, or?
I would say, in short term, we checked, I'm trying to remember which, the last month we looked at, as I was preparing for this meeting, we looked at perhaps October, and some of these problems still existed. And so I would say in the short term, the probate court should engage an accounting firm with expertise in QuickBooks that could just fix the problems, fix the technical issues in the record keeping, in the reconciliations. And then going forward, timely reconciliation, review, and correction of any issues that arise as they arise would be ideal.
In the management response, it says Judge Paget has asked for help with this issue in the past and not been able to resolve it. Who did she ask help?
I'm not certain who she asked for help, but, again, any accounting firm could help her.
Could help.
Stalvated checks, is there a system that goes back and gets those checks reissued that are not, be able to present it to the bank?
My thoughts on these extremely old outstanding checks, again, from the research that we did in looking at the older reconciliations, is these items have cleared, should have been cleared. Now, there are always old, when you're talking about paying a bond back to a person that's been through the court system, sometimes you don't have a good address for them and stuff like that, that's kind of a separate issue that does come up, have older checks sometimes, there's a process for what they call unclaimed property. These things that go back to 2011, they just should have been cleared, and something has gone haywire.
So that's un-negotiated funds.
Yes, these older outstanding items, I'm confident, properly cleared in the past, for some reason, within QuickBooks, someone made an error which uncleared them.
So we think it's a QuickBook error?
I think so.
But it's not a million dollars flying around?
I don't think so.
That's good.
I did not find an extra million dollars or a million dollars missing.
Johnson, maybe we could offer the probate courts.
Yes, so, yes, sir, I agree, Ms. Chairman, this is not an issue of missing money, it's not even an issue of mismanagement, it's an issue of their process.
Right.
And we have more than one constitutional officer that's still using QuickBooks because they're familiar with that. We are, we have other component units using QuickBooks. We had that conversation earlier this week, or last week, I guess, where we were talking about another component using QuickBooks and us needing to transfer them over to Munis. Some of them come kicking and screaming. Component units, I think we can probably lean on them a little more. Our constitutional officers, we're going to need the help of this board to help us with that. If they don't want to do it, they don't have to do it, as long as the money is not missing and not misappropriated and those sort of things, they can manage their office the way they see fit. But that being said, I think we can have a conversation, Judge Paget is very reasonable, as are the rest of our constitutional officers.
Right.
And if there's anything we can offer to them, we certainly will, and try to get this. Again, I'm very comfortable with the results, processes could be a little different, but I'm sure people would do my job differently if they were in my position.
Oh, don't go that far.
Yeah.
And QuickBooks is easy to use, but it's also easy analyzing, because it's easy to, for some well-meaning person to go back and touch something in previous periods that they shouldn't have, and that's probably.
Yes, QuickBooks may not be, may not be the best system for.
It wasn't designed for government work.
Right. But regardless, it could be cleaned up, and some processes around reviewing and correcting errors in banks would be ideal. As Scott mentioned, there's no issues noted in the amounts that were remitted, and so the next thing I'll mention is the traffic escrow account. This is where cash bonds are being held by the probate court, and we initially anticipated that there would be a list of outstanding bonds, and that list of outstanding bonds would agree to that reconciled bank statement. Of course, we were not able to do that, but we did investigate the court's tracking of these bonds, and noticed they had a very detailed, accurate methodology for tracking in real-time the outstanding bonds, but we were not able to agree that total back to the traffic escrow account, which is what we had kind of thought we would be able to do.
How far, what was the delta?
There is, it just, there's truly not a full listing of all the bonds that are currently outstanding because they track it kind of in real-time, and some of these bonds are older. So, because they can cross over periods, it's not tracked that way. But, we did notice that they were tracking their changes in the cash bonds in detail, and they could certainly find any information needed on any bond that we asked about. We also looked at purchase requisitions, purchase cards, timesheets, and just cash receipts noting no issues in the internal controls. So that is the probate court. Any other questions about that?
Any further comments or questions?
No.
All right, thank you for that information. Moving on to lodging tax.
Yes, so, this was a little bit different, you know, we do the hotel motel tax on a regular basis, but in this case, we were looking at the application of that same lodging tax to short-term rentals in the month of April. We obtained a listing of, filed a listing of known companies that offer these types of short-term rentals. This is not comprehensive, it's kind of hard to come up with a list of everyone who rents a house during the month of April, but we got this listing here of known renters, and we contacted them through the same process that we normally do with the hotels. So, what we found is that none of, none of these companies have been filing an excise tax return and remitting that lodging tax to the county. There's a kind of a variety of outcomes, and we tried to organize this the best way for a quick read. There's a company called On Location. So, there's a company called Own Location that was, I would say, eager to be in compliance. We put them together with the right people in the finance department, and I think they're coming together on getting caught up with compliance. In some cases, we would speak to someone at the company, such as the president of Incentive Travel Solutions, and they said that they didn't have any rental properties in Columbia County. Went to their website, and we were able to confirm that they do not. So, that was not, apparently, they don't, they don't rent in the county. In other instances, we'd speak to someone at the company, and they would say they do not have rentals, short-term rentals in Columbia County, but then we would go to their website, and they at least had listings in Columbia County. And then, there were several that didn't reply, or didn't call us back, or didn't provide anything. So, this doesn't have to be, we can continue to follow up on this. I just wanted to report to you as quickly as possible and let you know that of this, this list of companies that we were aware of, basically, no one is remitting the lodging tax on these short-term rentals.
Education thing?
So, I kind of.
Or they're like, hey, you can't catch me? What are we?
I kind of struggle on a recommendation. I try to give actionable recommendations to the county, and all I could come up with is improving knowledge, you know, increase rental operators' awareness of the excise tax, but I'm not sure exactly how to even accomplish that. So, I'm not certain what the actual answer is. We do know that some, some companies are in compliance. None of, none of these have been.
When businesses apply for a business license, don't they have to list their NAICS code, which tells the type of business they are, and if they are that type of business?
But not all these people apply for a business license either. So, this, this is one of those audits, when we did it, we almost knew what the outcome was going to be, but we needed to do it to bring it to the surface so everybody would kind of know where we are with this issue. When the legislature passed this law, we knew that we were going to have a hard time in this region because of the April rentals. We knew that it was going to be difficult for us to be able to track and implement this and be able to collect the revenue. It's almost on a, on an honor system basis. There's really no teeth in the law that really says, that really, you know, there's really no tremendous penalty for them not paying this tax. I think most people realize that, and quite frankly, I think that they're probably just thumbing their nose. For them to say, we don't have any rentals in Columbia County, for us to be able to go look at the website and see that they have multiple rentals in Columbia County.
Multiple listings?
Well, that.
There are multiple listings at this time?
Well, correct, but then to also, I mean, this is a big community, but it's also a small community. So, I know some of these people, and I know some of the people that are listed, and they're absolutely renting their houses, they're renting through these companies. So, it's going to be a matter of us trying to put some teeth in it. The legislature passed down a law, put it on the, made it responsibility of local government with really no instructions, guidelines as to how we should implement this.
We actually tried to opt-out.
That's the thing. Yeah, could we? Could we opt-out? I don't know. There's an opt-out.
Mark Newton wrote the bill, but he couldn't get it to the legislature.
Yeah. So, again, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know the answer exactly. I think we just need to be diligent on it. If it's something that we want to make sure that everybody's paying the share that the law requires, it may require additional work on our part. We may have to come up with a corresponding ordinance in Columbia County. You know, I don't want to be hard on the people that are doing the business, but then again, they have responsibility to pay their taxes, and the law is the law, and they have to respond. Most of these people, though, I really feel like the responses that they got, and I appreciate what John and his team did, but these flippant responses are common. I think, I think other people in other places are seeing some of the same things. They have no intention to pay their taxes. So, we had to figure out a way to put some teeth in it if we're going to, you know, we're going to try to get those taxes.
Terms of dollars, is this a big deal or?
Yes. Could be in the millions.
Ultimately, the taxes are paid by folks that don't live in Columbia County that are coming to stay here. So, and it's five, it's a 5%? It's, for each individual renter, it's not, I guess I'm getting a little bit off in an opinion there, but, but it is paid ultimately by the renter, not a citizen of Columbia County. It's just the responsibility to collect and remit is really what's on these rental companies.
We're not 100% sure that it's not being collected and not remitted. They could already be collecting it as part of their package and just not remitting it to the county.
Don't collect it, still their responsibility to pay, just like sales tax or anything else.
Correct.
If you don't collect it, you still have to.
Correct.
Pay it into the governmental entity.
I think, I think what we need to do is we need to work on some education on this. We have a little bit of time, but work on some education on this for these companies. See if it requires a business license, make it a, make it a corresponding, I guess, piece of paperwork they have to do with that business license, but then maybe look at an ordinance as well. Columbia County, if we're going to enforce it, and there's no enforcement action on the, on the state legislative side, maybe there needs to be some sort of enforcement action on this side. This is what we thought we would get back, though. So, we, we will continue to work towards a solution.
There's the awareness. Any other questions or comments? Right? So, that was, that was the last one.
Yeah, just a quick update.
What do we have coming up next?
Magistrate court should be ready for next, next quarter. Well, Water Utility Division has come along, come along really well. We'll have that ready for next quarter. And on the three-year rotation, we're looking at Coroner, Animal Services, 311 coming around. I'll be working on planning for the next quarter, the next day or so. We'll add these to the schedule. Questions?
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks.
A public comment. Being none, we will adjourn the audit committee and resume in three minutes with management and internal services. Thank you.